All right, well, let's get started here. Janice, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. We do have board members, a couple are not here yet, but we'll get going and we'll seat alternates if we need to. So this is the Nottingham Planning Board, and this is Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, and it's seven o'clock. So I'll call this meeting to order. And in anticipation of the extension of Executive Order 2020-17, the Nottingham Planning Board will hold a virtual meeting, virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access contemporaneously to listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. When we do get into any public hearings, we are going to ask that anyone from the public who has a comment, please use the raise hand button, and we'll call on you when it's appropriate. Let's see, has anyone else joined? Okay. So, my name is Dirk Rotenheis, I'm the chair. I want to go around to the members, just to call off, make sure that they are audio and video or however they're communicating is working. So I'll just run through a roll call of everyone and see who's available to do that. Ed Veal?
Present.
Gary Anderson?
Here.
Ian McKinnon?
Here.
Tyler Eaton?
Not coming.
Susan Mooney? Robert Davies?
Here.
Leanne Gass?
Here.
Did I miss anyone? I don't think so. Okay, we have, well, two board members missing, and...
Dirk, I think Sue might have just phoned in. Sorry to cut you off.
It's all right. Sue, are you able to hear us and communicate?
I could be wrong, I don't know. I know she usually dials in, I can't remember if that's the phone number there that's showing up, that just popped up.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and seat Leanne Gass for Tyler Eaton, and seat Robert Davies for...
No, you can't do that.
Oh, wait a minute.
You can't. For Tyler.
Say that again?
You can't seat her for Tyler, he's a slark.
Yeah, right, 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 sorry.
I'm he, I'm, I'm sorry, Dirk.
Okay, we can hear you now.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay. So then, so Susan's here. Tyler's not here and won't make it, so that's, that's out. So we have to seat somebody for the vacant seat. So, I'm not sure who went, but how about Leanne? Are you available for tonight to participate as an alternate and to the, as a member for the vacant spot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have Gary, Sue. Okay, so let's, I guess, get this meeting going here. We have a public hearing on two cases tonight. We do have a couple of minutes to go through, and I do want to set aside some time at the end that we can have a, some discussion about some zoning changes, and some general just board information to go through, so please stick around for that. The first case is a continued case, and this is case number 20009-SUB. Application from Maryland and Jeffrey Cole requesting to subdivide 31.18 acres into six lots, two commercial lots on Route 4, one residential lot on Smoke Street, three residential lots on Canard. Canard is a scenic road. The property has frontage on Route 4, Smoke Street, and Canard in Nottingham is identified as Tax Map 6, Lot 16. Let me pull up staff's comments. So, as an update, we conducted a site visit, the planning board, the applicant, on the 20th, so a few days ago. And we were walking along the frontage, for the most part, viewing driveways, and there were some board concerns of the steepness, some 25% slope areas, and the driveway, the common driveway, which is potentially close to some, or one of the driveways that was setback, close to the wetland setback. So, we wanted to just take a look at those. Appreciate the applicant for coming out and flagging those driveways. And there was a few board members that were present for that. So, as always, when we're out in the field, it makes it a lot easier to understand plans, slopes, and locations, visibility, those kind of things. So, those are always valuable, so appreciate those for coming out. We currently going through some of staff's notes, so there was a staff update. Primarily just a few comments, and then some questions on some underground utilities, and making sure that the road agent is consulted prior to the driveway construction. So, I'd ask the applicant if you could present where you're at, and any changes or resolution to any of the comments that have been made so far.
Thank you. Scott Frank goes from New Hampshire Land Consultants, representing Jeffrey and Maryland. We wanted to gather all the, all the reviews, the site walk. We just got the DPW review on the 17th. We also got the Fire Chief review. There's some notes and stuff we have to add to the plans, we have to add the trees that you requested for the last driveway, what's going to be cut, or actually for both driveways on Canard Road. We haven't done all that, we wanted to come tonight and get any additional comments, and then prepare kind of a final set of plans and get that submitted before the next, you know, next hearing. So, we've gathered all the, all the comments from the departments, what we gathered from the site walk, and whatever we get from tonight, and then we'll go back and update all the plans and get them resubmitted.
Okay. Very good. Let me open it up to the board to see if there are any comments based on staff's review, based on the DPW's comments, Fire Department's comments, or any other comments that they have on their own relative to the site walk, so that we can provide any additional comments. And then I'll open it up to a public hearing to hear from the public. So, any board members have comments or questions?
So, Mr. Chair, this is, Mr. Chair, this is Ed Veal, just a few, I think this might be one of the comments that the applicant mentioned that they were going to go back and just, you know, try to take care of all at once, was that commercial lot on Route 4, the 4K area, needs a second test pit within the building envelope. We still do have a waiver to act upon, which, you know, we can act upon that now or wait until after we get some more information or hear if there's any public comment tonight. And I believe the Fire Department review indicated that they were okay with this particular application with a 10% grade of the lot. So, the road agent, I think, you know, had pointed out that that wasn't, that it was above, so it would need attention. So, I think we're okay there.
Yep. Yeah, and so the waiver is for the slope on the driveways.
Yeah, and then the only other part was that the applicant did mention that there would be some trees removed. So, I don't know when the plan is for those to be flagged on the scenic road portion, just so that individuals can drive by and see where those are. I don't think it would require another site walk, since they'd be visible from the road.
No, when we were out, when we were out in the site walk, we did sort of sightline some of the areas that will be in, kind of obstructing where the driveways are, just to increase the visibility. So, you know, we visually, the applicant sort of visually pointed out some of the trees that likely would be flagged for removal. I think everybody was pretty comfortable with those, but yes, I think after this meeting, if the applicant can just make sure that those are flagged, and then, you know, prior to approval, we'll just make sure that those trees are the ones that the board would approve to be removed. Did you have anything else said? Because I agree, I think we should move on that waiver, since we do now have some recommendations from town staff. Or if there's any comments from other board members about the driveway location slope.
Um, this... I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Susan.
Um, I just have a question. Do we know what the percentage of steep slopes is? All we know as a, as a board is that they exceed 25%. And at what point does the slope come not, um, what do I want to say? Not something that we can attend to? Because it's just, it's like a waterfall. I have no feeling for what the slope is, only that it's beyond 25%. And I'm referring to our engineers.
Yeah, so when we were out on site, I was, I brought a smart level out to just do some spot checks in some of those areas, particularly where the driveway is. While they're kind of flagged off, or they're denoted on the plan as greater than 25% slopes, some of the measurements that I took in that driveway area were under the 25%. And there may have been some other areas that were close to the 25%, but not much, not, there wasn't a lot in, right in that area that were over 25%.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if that helps or not, but some of the slope... Yeah, some of the slopes we looked at were just for kind of a short, maybe 50, 75 feet in. And they were about at a 20% slope, or a little bit less. And, and then the driveways would then go across the slope, so not any more, you know, deeper into that 25%.
Yes.
And it looks like in the, they can address some of the potential erosion or runoff with proper check dams. I think the Public Works Director had also mentioned that as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that, thank you.
Yep, yep. Any other comments on slopes, or any of the members that were out on site, if they have concerns, or?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this isn't regarding the driveway, but it's regarding the Fire Department's recommendations.
Yep.
And so, the, I believe that it was recommended to sprinkle the residence, and was going to suggest, or I would assume that the applicant would include that on the plans. I think the applicant had agreed to do that.
Yeah, that would, note would have to be on the approved plans, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Ian McKinnon, my only, you guys, you and Ed kind of covered it, and the same thing with the driveway. I think we both agreed that, kind of seeing that 25% slope area is good to get eyes on it, and you see that there was varying slope across that entire region. I think it's more of a tolerance of the survey capabilities, otherwise we'd be doing shots every five feet. And Ed, me too, I was going to just suggest that we act on the waiver this evening, because I assume that would obviously greatly help the applicant work towards the final set of plans.
Yep. Okay, so yeah, I think if someone can make a motion for granting the waiver requested. I don't have that waiver right in front of me to cite those numbers.
Just one more question about, so about those steep slope areas. I know, I think you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, during a prior meeting about the grade plane, or grade plan, which I think has been provided now for the, in general, the slope and the amount of cut that would be required. One thing I don't have a great idea of is the total area that's going to be impacted for that. Obviously, some of these areas, it looks like it's going to be, to get to the, where the driveway will end up, is going to be 12 plus feet of, of cut. So obviously, you have to cut to go out, you know, how many ever feet, I don't know if it's, I don't know what the distance is laterally that you have to go out to be able to then provide enough slope to the driveway. Do we have any idea of, if an applicant might have, have that information, or a general ballpark of that information?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, Scott, if you could answer that, or I could just take a scale and look at it on the plan itself.
Yeah, I don't have that calculated, but I can open the drawing and look at it real quick, and...
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I think that would help us with, when we have that discussion on the, on the waiver there.
So the driveway looks to be... Scott, how wide are the driveways there?
I believe we did 16 up until it splits, and then 12s.
Okay, I've got it, got it here. 40.
And just as, if I can, on the waivers, we were required also to submit a second waiver on steep slopes. So one of them is for the driveway, and one is for impacts, the slope. So there's two waivers that we submitted.
Okay.
I was looking at sheet 7. Is what I was kind of looking at, is gauging, because you can see that the total area that would be graded to be able to put that driveway in at that location.
So yeah, just by, just kind of scaling off the set of plans, if the driveway is about 16 feet wide, the slope on both sides would be about 24 feet. 24 to 25 feet of disturbed, disturbance on each side. And those are a two to one slope.
It's a total of about 4,500 square feet, 4,700 square feet.
Okay, for the, for the entire proposed driveway from curb cut on Canard, all up to House 1 and House 2?
Well, where we impact the 25%, that's 4,500 square feet.
Okay.
Because it levels out or flattens out once, once you're about 100, about 100 feet in. Yeah, once you're 100 feet into the site, you're past the 25% slopes.
Okay. And then the proposed culvert with riprap. Is that going into any kind of, there's no retention pond or anything proposed, correct? That's just going to the slope itself?
Right, well, we had a culvert at the bottom. And then we're kind of at a, as we looked at it in the field over the weekend, we are kind of at a high point, and not really that much of a high point, but it does kind of drain both ways. But we can provide a culvert in that area, and whatever the road agent, you know, forces or wants us to do there.
Yeah, it wasn't evident that there's a deep ditch line, like a typical drainage ditch would be along this roadside. It was, you know, as he indicated, it was a bit of a high point, so drainage was going in each direction, but I think it would be, well, I would recommend having a culvert there regardless, just so water doesn't come up over on, over the driveway or anything like that.
Right, but I'm sorry, for proposed lot 16-2, at the top of the driveway, there's, there's mention of a proposed culvert there that looks like it would drain from west to east.
Yeah.
But I don't know what it's draining to.
It's just that runoff that would get trapped in between the driveways.
Okay.
And that, so would bring it down to the right side of, as you're looking up the driveway, to the right side of the driveway and discharge down. So any runoff that would get trapped in that, in the middle of the driveway.
Okay, yeah, and then it would be basically going towards the house, not towards, not down towards the road.
The runoff would go down towards the road.
Yes, yeah, there's, there's swales on both sides of the driveway that then leads all the way down to the road.
It's just if any water, any surface runoff that doesn't get infiltrated from just run, overland.
Got it, yes.
It'll catch it and get it out of that kind of trap area.
Yep, thank you.
And on the driveways too, if I could just mention, there was a talk about rough surface. The applicant plans on making them gravel driveways, so that we... On Route 4.
Excellent, thank you.
Dirk, my only, my only comment, just to add to the culvert thing, is I do think that, like you said, it's probably worth adding, especially if, in the future, this is ever regraded, to actually create a ditch line.
Yep.
Then it's in place for that.
Yep.
Because I think right now that ditch might be, where the driveway is going, there might be a six inch depression there at that, but...
Okay, well, comfortable, and let's have a motion on both waivers. Again, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the application. I can, if you'd like, I can read, read both of them that we submitted. The first one for the driveways was for Article 15, Section 3.2.4. Is the 8% driveway. And what it is, is to allow two residential driveways to have a maximum of 10% grade, where 8% is allowed. The two lots we were asking for a driveway slope waiver is 16-3 and 16-4, which that was, that was the old numbers on the lot, so the actual waiver would be for 16-2 and 3.
Okay. And what was the second one?
And the second one was one, Article 20, Section 2.4, which is, I believe it speaks of protection of slopes and sensitive areas. And we were asking to allow the impact of steep slopes for one common driveway for lots 16-2 and 16-3. There was approximately 5,000 square feet of impact of the steep slopes for the construction of the driveway.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve waiver from Article 15-3-2-4, and Article 20, was it 1-2-4? Yeah. Maybe 20...
2-4.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we approve the waivers for Case 20-009-SUB, as, as read.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that motion? Let me do a roll call. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, so those waivers are granted. So that allows them to move ahead to make sure that those are all, plans are all tightened up. I know there was comments regarding the proper erosion control and sediment control, so just make sure the plans get updated for that. If there's no other comments from the board, I'm going to open it up to the public. So, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is for Case 20009-SUB. The application for subdivision. And just asking any public if they want to speak against this application, or speak for the application. If you could either indicate, either raise your hand, or we have a smaller group, if you want to come off mute just to make sure you get our attention. Okay, I'll call again if there's any comment from public. And for a third and last time, any comment on Case 20009-SUB? I guess seeing no public comment, I'll close the public hearing. And then bring it back to the board to see if there's any other comments or anything that we haven't touched on that the applicant should know about to, so that they can prepare final plans. And those final plans will be presented at our next meeting. And we would, you know, have a vote on that day.
So, just a couple of quick things, oh, sorry, go to Sue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have two comments on this application. Going through the latest set of plans, I see where there are wetland setbacks, but I don't see any indication of vegetative no disturb buffers that we attended to when the applicant came in front of the Conservation Commission. And I'm just concerned that this no disturb buffer around these particular wetlands might just get lost in the shuffle. And I would appreciate if that was added to the plans or be attended to.
Well, I do s...
And the second item...
Let me just answer that real quick. I do see on their set of plans that they have a no cut zone. So the no cut zone is within the 50-foot wetland setback.
Are you looking at a particular sheet on the plan?
Sheet 5, 5 of 12.
All right, here we go. I see a 50-foot wetland setback.
And then within that hatched area, there's a couple spots throughout that have a no cut zone labeled in there, you see that?
No, no. Is it noted in the notes?
Uh, it is labeled in the notes, it's in the legend at the top of the page. So it has no cut zone as the crosshatch symbol.
Okay, okay.
Do you see that?
Uh, no, but I'll take your word for it.
And the applicant, previously, for the commercial lot, you know, they weren't planning on adding that, because of, you know, without a...
Yeah, yeah, that's not...
You know, that would be separate.
But for the residential lots that are outside of power line right of way, there was just one little one that didn't have that no disturb buffer, and, and the applicant said that they... And, and the applicant said that they would add that, and I don't remember if that's, um, which lot that was in. But as long as it's not forgotten.
Lot sixteen, dash, four, the, to the corner.
Okay, that's the next page then. Oh, no, no, I see. Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, Ian. And my second point was, was there any more information, um, that was received from the Natural Heritage Bureau as to the quality of the wetlands there, their functions and values, and how they might support, um, species of interest? And to the point where this might also be added to the deeds for information for, for future landowners. So they know how, what the potential value of these wetlands are for New Hampshire's species.
I guess I'd ask the applicant if that was submitted.
Yeah, I can speak to that. When we, you know, it was submitted after the Conservation Commission, we got the letter from Kim Tuttle saying that they, they don't have the staff to review, a complete review, but she sent us a poster that we have to add to the plan set saying that there's turtles in the areas. But they're not going to do any further review because of the staffing issues up there and with us not impacting or asking for any other D E S permits other than subdivision. They typically don't do that anyways.
Uh huh.
They're not, they're not going to review it any deeper than they already have. And so, and we'll have to add that stuff that they requested or suggested we add.
Is it something that we can, that can be added to the deed so it has paper trails so people know that these aren't just puddles in the backyard, that they're precious environments?
I'm not, they're not classified, right? I mean, there, there's no classification that says that they're precious.
Well, you know, a, a wetland scientist would have gone out there, um, at a particular time of year to determine what their functions and values are, um, what sorts of amphibian eggs you could find and blah, blah, blah. But just to not even, just, just to mention the fact that they have potential for New Hampshire wildlife in the deeds and to respect that could go a long way. You know, there's no, there's not going to be any environmental police, but people should know as an outreach thing that, um, what they have is, is important.
So are you just, are you, you basically want the, are you asking that the deed reference or make note of the fact that there's just wetlands present on the property? Or are you looking for that, what you just described, that wetlands have value and there's, they're a resource?
They have, yes, they have value because they provide blah, blah, blah. Habitat for special species and.
My only thought on that is that a lot, if lawyers or engineers are writing a deed, they tend to keep it to the legal jargon of ownership, um, and where there's no, in an H O A, I would expect, I guess, a little bit more. I'm just not sure how they would write that into a, a legal deed.
Mm hmm.
But I definitely, I think, I do think that having this on the plan and the hatches, I'm seeing it as well, the crosshatch is quite clear showing, you know, a pretty well-defined fifty foot offer.
Would the, would the verbiage suffice maybe? And so obviously the plan's got the no cut buffer, but how many people ever look at the plan when they, when they look at their house, when they buy a house? Would the no cut buffer be referenced in the deed? I don't know if that would be sufficient to, to satisfy saying that, you know, there's a fifty foot no cut vegetative buffer around the, the wetlands identified on plan, you know, reference the plan number. Trying, like, I think that's clear and concise in not getting outside the legal.
I'd, I'd agree with that. I just think, yeah, if you're just mentioning the buffer, just, I just don't know how we would, it might be difficult for them to put descriptions on wetlands.
Right.
I guess provide background. So I, I agree with you, Ed, that would, I think that would be doable.
Mr. Frankowitz, I see you raising your hand.
Typically in the deed, you'll see that it'll say, see, plan number da, 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 for additional restrictions and, and, additional restrictions and other things that, so it directs them to the plan and then the plan will say the fifty foot no cut. And I think putting it all into a deed like that is, isn't really necessary when the plan's going to be recorded and then the town's going to have copies on the, of, of all the plan set as well. So you'd be surprised how, how deep some people dig when they buy a piece of property and, and see all the restrictions before they, or at least if they hire somebody to, to look at lots, they should be looking at all that.
Let's hope.
Well, yeah, I, I think, you know, it certainly at the very least, it needs to reference the plan. The deed more than likely will reference the plan. I just don't want to put a condition onto an applicant then that they can't meet because the attorney won't put that in a deed because there isn't specific language.
And also now we have to review that deed to see if it meets that intent too. So it's time, time for us to review or staff, staff in general to review.
Yeah, unless, unless there's a specific finding, you know, if, if it's general, you know, precious wetland, as much as every wetland is precious, then, you know, if there's no specific turtle or whatever else flower needs to be protected, I, I don't, I don't know, putting it into a deed is appropriate.
Well, there, there is. I think that's the point on this, these wetlands particularly were identified as being a high likelihood for four particular species. Um, not all wetlands in town have that same criteria, but I believe these, these did for the blandings, what being one of them, Black Racer possibly spotted and, uh, came over the fourth that was mentioned, but. So again, I wouldn't want something like wachy-washy of, you know, that they're important and, and that they're, but there may be species versus something that's just concrete saying that, that there's a no disturb vegetative buffer around wetlands as identified on plan. What if this plan ends up becoming?
You know, not to belabor the topic, but when people have a deed and they have a no disturb buffer around a wetland, there should be some rationale as to why that is. You know, why are we getting these rules on wetlands and, and they're just a place where mosquitoes breed? But if you identify the rationale that these provide habitat for certain aquatic species, then they'll get it. But if you don't say anything, they're going to go, you know.
Yeah, I just don't, I, I just don't agree that the deed is a location to educate the property owner of regulations. You know, there's already, these are already regulated. And, and, you know, restrictions are placed on wetlands. I, I just, I, I just don't see putting it into a deed that is just for their information. You know, if, if, if the education is there, there's other means that we need to be better at to get people interested in this and, and educate them.
Mr. Chairman, are these reports referred to in the deed at least, so that even like the historical ones as well? So that when they look at the deed, they can see that a report's been done and.
I, I don't know. I haven't seen the deed, but, um, a lot of times, yeah, the reports are, if they're a geotechnical report or soils reports, um, are, are, are sometimes listed as in the deeds. You know, that's more appropriate than kind of describing it within that deed. You know, if we can reference a report or we can reference something specific, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, there are other comments from members? Okay, let's, um, if I can have a motion to continue this to the next meet, yes, go ahead, Mr. Frankowitz.
One thing, we had talked briefly at the site plan, you said I should bring it up, or at the site walk, and we should bring it up tonight about underground or, or above ground utilities.
Right, yeah, so on a scenic road, um, you know, we, the town does regulate the cutting of trees, moving of stone walls. We don't have anything in our regulation that, um, states anything relative to overhead utilities. But I do want to open it up to the board to see, you know, that there are options to go overhead or underground.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. It is in our subdivision regulations that for new subdivisions, uh, utilities will be under, will be created, put underground. And this was mentioned for this particular case at the very beginning, and I believe it was agreed upon.
Okay, okay, sorry, I.
And that's okay. It's Article seventeen of the subdivision regs, seventeen point one, uh, all utilities shall be installed underground.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know, Mr. Frankowitz, if we were talking about the, the line that goes over the road to the other side of the property or if it was up the driveways.
The applicant spoke to me about specifically the lot on Smoke Street and where the house is going to be fairly close to the road. If that lot could have overhead utilities to that lot. And, and then they, they'd be willing to do the underground along Canard, but they were wondering if Smoke Street lot could be over there. I, that no doubt requires another waiver for us to submit.
There is a waiver process for it, yeah, at seventeen point one, number two, uh, waivers. There is a, some verbiage there for the possibility of a waiver.
But if we do entertain a waiver, I, I would, we definitely would need a plan of where that hole would go, where the overhead wires would go, any of the trees that would be cut to get that wire overhead to the house, where the house lot's going to be, et cetera. So there would be some detail that's necessary.
That's not a scenic road.
It doesn't, I, I wouldn't say it matters really because it's, you know, we're saying it within a subdivision. Regardless, they have to be underground, right, Ed? That's what our subdivision.
The way I'm reading the, that particular section of the subdivision regulations, yep.
So if we're going to waive that, we want to know what the impacts of that waiver would be.
Correct. It says where waivers request of the above and alternate plan shall be approved that minimizes the visual impact of, of utility structures and provides for tree growth in accordance with Article twenty. And then I'd have to go to Article twenty to see what that says.
Yep.
Okay, I'll talk with the applicant about that and see what they do.
Anything else?
Just a quick question for that applicant. Um, I know you, you said you're going to flag the trees on Canard. Are they going to be removed? Any idea what color flagging you plan on using for those and when you may have that done? So if anybody wants to go by, can.
We will have it done by the end of next week, and I'd say orange. We can flag them with orange.
All right, thanks so much. And thank you, everybody, for that, into the sidewalk.
Okay, a motion to continue then, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue case twenty, zero, zero, nine, S U B to March tenth at seven o'clock.
Okay. Is the motion in a second? Uh, Mr. Frankowitz?
I have a conflict on the tenth and the applicant is willing to push it to the twenty-fourth if that's okay with the board.
Joanna, let me just check with you. Is that okay with, with you in that schedule for the twenty-fourth of March?
Yes, that'll, that'll work all right. I think I have two cases that night already.
Okay.
I was also going to suggest that because again, if we were doing the ten day plan rule, that requires submitting plans this week.
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Frankowitz. So let's amend that motion to March twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see. So I'll just roll call vote that continuance. I thought it was Ian. Is there, is there a second?
Gary?
That was me.
Gary, second. Thanks, Buzz, for confirming that. Let me just do a roll call. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
Uh, Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next case. Uh, the case is, uh, number two, one, zero, zero, two, S U B, an application from Ledge Farm LLC, uh, owned by Joseph Falzone, requesting a seven lot conventional subdivision. Uh, property's located on Guile Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map forty, uh, lot one. Yeah, let me go through what staff review we had got submitted. There was a site walk that took place and I'm wondering if, uh, I think Leanne or Ian, you were there, if you could maybe just summarize that?
Yeah, I can summarize. I took the notes on it. Um, we had a pretty good turnout. Um, we had quite a few of butters show up, um, along with, uh, the applicant and Mr. Paul the engineer. We basically viewed every shared driveway. Uh, we started, worked our way down the road. Looking at the shared driveways, we pointed out those locations, um, covered a couple different topics. Some people had questions on EcoPass itself, the wetland crossings. Um, and then we worked our way back to the parking area, which was on lot one. So we all got to see, we actually, the driveway that we used is the driveway they proposed to use for lot one. Um, we were able to see the area that's clouded, um, for the possibly sensitive area that shows up on some of the plans. Um, it was clearly visible. It's the only area with trees in that field. Um, and then there was just some, you know, some of the butters had questions on, um, the application or just their, their thoughts based on the site walk, so. But I think everybody was happy to see the driveway locations, everything was staked. There will be possibly some tree removal needed. We can see some pretty large pines that might be, need to be removed, but that would, uh, just require some consultation with the road agent. Probably eighty-year-old pine trees, but. Yeah, other than that, that, I think that basically sums it up, but it's a good, good turnout.
Okay, great. Leanne, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I would just say, um, I, for the, the plan, this is another situation where it might be good if there's reference to the report from D H R about the cemetery. I mean, we have substantial documentation that there's a cemetery on this land. We just can't quite figure out exactly where it is. But I think the homeowners should know that it's there, uh, for any future building that they might decide to do on the properties. And the location, they put it on the plan, we don't even know if that's accurate.
Right.
Um, Dirk, one more thing I wanted to note on that, it's kind of probably one of the things we talked about the most was that, it was the first time I had heard about it, but, um, Mr. Falzone let us know that the contractor that he will be using to construct the driveways and if there's a different contractor for the House Foundations, any contractor that needs to perform excavation on the site actually has to be, take a, um, a short course from this historical consultant, um, that is a, uh, condition of the state permit. So that was just something I figured everybody would find interesting. That contractor will have to be trained to, I guess, recognize a situation where they need to call somebody.
Yeah, and it was, it was indicated last, um, meeting that as well and that, you know, if that contractor does identify some, something, um, then they will have to alert the state and/or the archaeologist who wrote that report.
Yep.
Um, but I agree with Leanne, similar to the last one. If there's a specific report, um, that could be referenced in a deed or, or some other conveyance, then I, I think that would be, uh, helpful to any home purchaser or land purchaser. You know, once, once they're gone, the home's built, everything's up. If somebody wants to plant a garden and then find something, then, you know, they, they have a way to at least understand and research it a little bit more, once, uh, once the developer's gone. Okay, um, and what, looking at staff's report to see if there are any outstanding items, I do know that for the shared driveway, um, we'll need to set up another Z B A meeting, I think that application's been made, uh, and the meeting will be set up for, uh, remind me, Joanna, is it the twenty-fourth, or, I'm sorry, twenty?
March sixteenth.
March sixteenth, okay. And I'd ask Ian or Leanne, when you were out there on, on the site, um, you know, the location of that potential shared driveway that they will need to obtain that variance, could you provide any input or opinion on that location? Is it, I mean, we know that it's probably the shorter distance for any, or the least impactful to wetlands?
Yeah, and, you know, kind of looking at where the stakes were, um, you know, it was obviously, I didn't really look down any of the proposed property lines, but, um, just looking at what I saw out there, plus the plan, um, you know, they did choose the shortest distance to cross, which is always favored, um, if they did follow the property line, it would be, uh, the initial crossing would be twice as long, and they'd actually potentially have, they'd be close to the wetland even further down the lot line, you know, as they straddle it, so, um, there's a lot of dense vegetation, but, um, just based on what I saw and then looking at the plan, I do think, um, I'd favor the shorter impact, um, than following the property line in this case, and it really doesn't affect the driveway length much, but it does keep the driveway away from the wetland in other areas.
Okay. Um, great, yeah, I'd, I'd just ask if the applicant has more things to offer, um, you know, you, you don't have, we, this is, you know, we've heard this, seen this application in a number of meetings, so I don't, I don't expect you to have to go through everything, but if there's any updates, um, that the applicant wants to present, or anything from their observations during the site walk, or anything, we'd be happy to hear those, uh, before we open a public hearing.
Uh, just a quick update, Mr. Chairman, um, just so everybody is aware, hopefully you all got your new plans that were provided, um, basically, I provided new plans, which was mainly to respond to the commentary made at the previous meeting, um, very simply, some of the, uh, corrections were to add a non-buildable note on the section of Lot One that was a little confusing, there's only one building area on that lot, um, we had updated a stone drip edge detail that was requested by Ian, um, and I had actually reduced the scales on the site plans, uh, it was noted at the previous meeting, they were a little hard to read at the hundred scale, so I actually broke them up into sixty scale for you, so you could see them a little better, and I think they're a little bit clearer to read, um, again, other than that, no, we just, the, the major thing right now is, uh, we have provided an application to Z B A, uh, from what we understand, the chairwoman knows that that's been submitted, and we believe that that's not going to be, uh, an issue at that meeting, so that's, um, that's all we really have this evening.
Okay. All right, with that, let me turn it to the board, this, uh, yes, applicant, Mr. Falzone?
Uh, yes, we, we had talked at the last hearing, and I think that, uh, you voiced an opinion, uh, my hopes are that I don't have to come back and I can get a conditional approval, so I don't have to come back for just, you know, just the Z B A, uh, they all, they all walked that line, all the members have walked the line, and it was just an oversight.
Yeah, I think at this point, there primarily was, you know, wanting to make sure that this board had the opportunity to go out and see those driveway locations, um, and then attend to any of those other, you know, minor plan comments, um, and then we'll hear a little bit from the, um, public, uh, I don't, I don't see any other newer items that would need to be attended to.
I also want to note that they will need to act on the waiver request as well.
Okay.
I think we already, uh.
We already, we already did, I thought.
Did we do that?
We did, yes.
Oh, oh, that's easy.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Veal, there was one other thing, I appreciate, I thank applicant for having the, um, for lack of, I don't know what the term was, for, for the report done on the, uh, the burial ground analysis, um, is, every time we get one of those reports that we don't generally see, it's, it's enlightening to me, is to, you know, how those are done and what they are, um, my only thought, when I reviewed it, there was a, I had a question is, in the, the historical record, the burial ground was east northeast of the, of the, um, the house, but it looks like the area surveyed was more just easterly, um, looking at where the proposed development is, uh, any, any house or anything like that, it looks like it would be away from the east northeast area, especially if you measure out a hundred and fifty yards, um, I'm assuming that the architectural firm, not the architectural firm, the archaeology firm, does have a lot more background in it than I do, um, but I just noticed that one discrepancy, and wanted to mention it to the applicant, and see if there's any additional, uh, information as to why they went to that specific spot instead of east northeast.
Uh, be, be, because originally, when that deed was written in the seventeen hundreds and going forward, Guile's Road wasn't where it is today, she explained that to me, and they believed there was a switch, when they were describing it, they weren't describing it exactly, that's why we end up going out there not one day, but three days, and if you look at the plans, to be safe, she dug in multiple locations to, to try to find anything.
Yep.
A, a, and the state agrees that we've done everything that we can do, other than the cost that these people are gonna, uh, take, just in the event after it's taken, they know what to spot if they hit something, and the other thing she said, you got to keep in mind, we don't know for certain what they were buried in, and over this period of time, you, you know, how deep they are, we, and where they are, is, is, is an unknown, uh, but we spent a lot of time out there, and we're totally keeping away from the area where they think it would logically be, and again, keep in mind that the road wasn't where it is today, they thought, and they dug the most up on that plateau, right behind the trees off the road, uh, is where they, and they dug that whole area, uh, you know, looking, looking for the changes in soils, if it had been dug up, and they didn't find anything, but we're totally keeping away from that area anyway, purposely.
I'm not entirely sure the road was moved, we've been doing a little bit of research on that after you mentioned that at the last meeting, there was a house where the barn was on the other side in the mid eighteen hundreds, um, maybe she's thinking that that was the house that is now the cellar hole on the other side of the street, but regardless, we know that people have seen the cemetery in, like, in the nineteen sixties, which is when they referenced that direction, um, but I, I felt pretty good where the area she did cover, that's pretty much what we thought it would probably be as well, um, my only thought was just whether or not ground penetrating radar might be a little more effective, uh, in finding it, but, uh, I mean, there's not a whole lot more we can do to find it.
They, they, they explain, the way we did it is more work and more accurate, because the ground penetrating picks up shapes, and it could be picking up shapes of something else that was buried there, and that's why we end up going out for three days, and that's why that firm are experts at finding cemeteries, and that's why, when it was recommended by the state, who to go to, that I went to them.
Yeah, I just don't know if a G P R might cover more territory, it can cover more territory, and then what they did as far as stripping, uh, the land back is more effective once you've narrowed down where it is, so, I mean, that's really the only other option we could possibly take to try and find it, is to use G P R.
I've already done everything I'm required to do by the state, and I have a permit from the state to go forward.
Yep. Which is why I think we should, it's important that it's referenced, at least in the deed, that report, so that people know that it's there somewhere.
I have no problem with that.
Yep. Any other comments from the board? All right, I'll open it up to a.
I'm sorry, this is, um, Susan, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I'm looking at, um, staff comments, um, in light of maybe, um, either continuing this to a later date, or giving conditional approval, but what staff said, our consultant from Stratford Regional Planning, that there seems to be quite a long list of, of changes, corrections, and additions for the application, and, uh, and, and I'm going to add another one, when you look at the plan, the owner of record is not Diane Monte anymore, so that should also be amended. That's my comment.
Scott, Scott Poe, the application was changed into my name, Sue.
Yes, yes, but the, but the, um, plans that we received, um, don't, don't indicate that.
Right, but the final plans, you wouldn't be getting conditional approval, you wouldn't be finding, signing the final plans until I'm done, we've agreed to make those changes.
Okay, I did not, I did not know that.
If I can add to, um, w- we did most of the construction detail and site plane, site plan changes, we do know, we're waiting basically to get our approval from Z B A for the driveways, which then we will add the driveway easements to do set, uh, do set surveys plans, so that's, that's simply why we didn't update, um, do sets plans at this time, because we already know there's more changes coming, uh, in reference to the notes, um, from the planner, actually, in the majority of them, I did address in our new plans, um, ones that are on the sets plans obviously have not changed.
Scott, are some of those changes you're referring to on do sets, is that like the items that need to be added to the sheet still be recorded, which I believe are the, kind of, the first sheets in the set?
Yeah.
Like the four, four K areas, okay?
Yeah, and the, that's a good point, and, you know, the four K and the wells and stuff, they, the registry won't accept that, they are very stringent in what they'll take these days, and if it doesn't actually have to do with the mathematics of the lot, we can't put that on a reportable plan anymore.
Is that because it's being, is that because you've recorded it as a subdivision, and it's not recorded as a site plan? I wasn't, I didn't even know they didn't do four K areas anymore, interesting.
Yeah, any kind of line work like that, they, they disregard, and they won't take it anymore.
And then you lose your fee when they review it. Okay.
Well, we'll have them on, on our plans, the recorded.
Yep.
Town recorded plans.
On file, yep.
Yep. Okay, and, yeah, I did, I did just go through a couple of those notes that were on, um, Stratford Regional Planning Commission's list here, and, you know, signatures and stamps and seals and all of that, uh, assume that will be on those final plans.
Yes.
I, I, I don't see any of these that are, at this point, any substantive changes that can't be covered in conditional approval, uh, we just want to make sure we have a conditional condition on, um, Z B A granting the shared driveway.
And before we get to that, Mr. Chair, did you want to, um, I, I can't remember if we had closed the public hearing, opened the public hearing for this case or not, I do see some individuals online, I don't know if they're online for this case or not.
Um, yeah, thank you, yep, we need to do that, um, let me do that now, I'll just open the public hearing, he- here's a time where a public can, uh, speak, uh, against this application, uh, to this application, for it, um, please direct any comments or questions to me, and, uh, we'll see if we can get resolution or, uh, answers to those questions, so if you could use either the raised hand, or wave in front of your, uh, I see, is it Linda Morissette?
Yes, Linda Morissette, I'm down on Guile Road, down the end of Guile Road, um, I'm just need to, uh, agree with Leanne, um, my biggest thing is just, I know that Mr. Falzone has done a lot of work to look into this, but I just truly feel that taking that one step, even though it's another step, to just say, the ground penetrating equipment showed this, didn't show that, but I just so strongly feel those people that are buried there, they need to be memorialized one way or another, even if you're staying away from that site, somehow it should be acknowledged that there's a cemetery there, and there are people buried. To me, it doesn't fare well to us as a community, nor as hu- as human beings, to just say, okay, well, we'll train people, if we run into it, then we'll deal with it, I, I don't know, it's just like, why not take that one step, why not do that, that's all I have to say, I understand, I like the idea of putting it in the deeds, I think that's, that's really commendable to do that, but I just don't know how I will ever feel about that, ever.
Yeah, no, we, we, yeah, we've appreciated that, and I think we've talked about it quite a bit, and, you know, this, um, owner, current owner, has, has done a lot of work at their expense to find that, you know, the, the remains, and, and unfortunately, even the, you know, top experts in New Hampshire were unable to do that, um, you know, it, it, I don't think it is truly fair for an owner to exhaust all means in order to do it, um, they've done a really good due diligence, um, and yes, it's, uh, unfortunate that records just do not pinpoint it, and evidence at this point. And I, I'm sure if the family that's there, I'm sure Mr. Falzone would be happy to sell them that piece of property. I'm not speaking for him, I don't know, maybe he won't, but I'm sure, sure that they're for sale, and so they could, in fact, memorialize that by purchasing. Yeah, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, any other public input? It is a smaller group, so if you do have a comment, you can turn your video on and wave, or take yourself off mute. Seeing none, I'll just call for a third time, anybody to, for, or against this application, now's the time to step forward and voice any opinion? Okay, last time, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much, um, so, board, at, at this point, we, we do have the options of, um, we do have some options of continuing, we do have the option of, um, a conditional approval, um, which may be, I guess, more appropriate, because there are some conditions that are just, you know, some notes and some administrative things, but really, it's bearing on the Z B A, um, variance, granting that variance, and we can condition it, and if they don't grant that variance, uh, then, uh, the conditions of the subdivision would not, um, be met, so then that would come back for either an amended subdivision or a reapplication.
Mr. Chair, one thing I wanted to throw out there that I don't think we've talked about, um, there was a, uh, fire department review letter that came in and reference, and they did reference a cistern or. There was a fire department review letter that came in and they did reference a cistern or note regarding the sprinkler system. I didn't know if the applicant engineer had received that.
Yeah, we're sprinkling the homes.
Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure we touch upon that.
It's a good point, Ian, I don't know if, I saw one from Public Works or any other staff member. Joanna, do you know if anything else came in?
Yeah, I just happened to see it pop up on the website.
I believe there is one from Public Works, or was there not? Sorry, there's so many cases going on. No, Public Works did not get to that one, to sending me something, but we discussed it together in the office today and he said no comments on this one.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess-
Are you looking for discussion or are you just looking to see if a motion comes forward?
I'm looking, well, I'm waiting for a motion to come forward.
So I just checked to make sure we're fine, we can do a conditional approval, knowing that there might be, that there's a variance required.
Yes, there's precedence of that.
If for some reason the variance did not get approved, we would then have to just hold another public hearing to have a revised plan come through to address that. Just set an order for everybody.
Yep.
And then the applicant does have that staff's, the staff review that was updated with the date 2/23.
23.
For Mr. Falzone? Yes, yeah, okay, so if we condition, make any conditions with reference to comments in that, that review, instead of, instead of listing all those changes and corrections.
Mr. Chair, I think I'm prepared to put a motion out there and I guess we can see if it captures everything.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to conditionally approve case 2-1-002-SUB with the conditions that the zoning board of appeals approves the active application for the shared driveway variance. Also that reference to the state NHDR report and approval is placed in the property deeds. That the applicants satisfy the remaining review comments that are outlined on the SRPC staff memo. I think the latest date on that is 2/23/2021.
Yep.
And lastly, just to ensure that there's a note on the plans regarding the homes to be sprinkled.
I think you captured everything.
Just the underground utilities, I don't know if that's been mentioned, and monuments set, I don't know if those have already been set or not. I don't think those are in the staff comments.
I don't see them in the comments, I'm happy to add those to the motion.
Okay, so I'll second the motions, Mr. Veal.
Okay, so that's a motion and a second, any discussion from any board member?
Isn't on the plans, I forget, but about the cellar hole, I think we talked about this on the sidewalk. It's supposed to be untouched, is that noted on the plan?
You're talking about the lot, the lot one cellar hole?
Yeah.
That was my understanding, it looks to be, yeah, one of the areas that are left untouched.
We agreed to do that and it's also recommended in their report.
Yeah, we'll let them know if it's not there.
Okay. All right, so any other discussion, it sounds like that's included. Let me take a vote here, Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yeah.
And chair votes yes, so there's a conditional approval. And we'll just make sure that, you know, you get any of the updated plans, obviously wait until ZBA meeting and, and that notification. Okay. Appreciate it, and you know, thank you, Mr. Cole and Mr. Falzone, for going that extra step here just to satisfy, you know, your curiosity as well as others, appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, let's see, I could say I had a couple of items. So a couple of things I wanted to bring up, we really, we need to start getting some more action on master planning and updates. And there's a couple of other things we really need to get our hands around, even for next year's zoning amendments. We are finding more and more things that are, as we, as we attack one thing, other things come up. And I just want to update everybody that, on tiny homes, we are finding, at least the building permit applications, they're starting to get some tiny homes. We do not currently have a regulation on tiny homes. The state has a, currently has a bill that is in front of legislature, specifically for tiny homes. I've gone through that bill and it covers a lot of details that I think our building inspector, you know, would appreciate having that type of regulation and being able to have guidance and providing. I'll distribute that bill out, it hasn't passed, so it may not. But there's some good language we may want to take from that if we do decide to create a tiny home portion of the zoning. And it deals with, you know, whether it's on wheels, whether it's not on wheels, whether it gets, you know, how it gets taxed. The environmental piece, parts of it, they have to have a, you know, septic or a leach field. And, you know, even if they're on wheels, they have to have, you know, public wa- or their own private well. Or they can have contained, fully contained septic, fully contained potable water. But they have to have, you know, the building has to be certified. If it's manufactured somewhere else, it has to be, have a state certification. And if the trailer is brought in, if it's built on a trailer, then that trailer has to be certified that it's built specifically for a tiny home. So there's a lot of things that are on there that I think are good. Second one is ADUs. So the state is looking at another bill relative to ADUs. We do have some language in our own regulations regarding that. But they are looking at extending the ADUs to a maximum allowable of three bedrooms. And I know that we talked in the past that really the 750 square feet would kind of self-regulate how many bedrooms it would be. But the state's looking at maybe having a regulation that just has a maximum number of bedrooms, so. Just information, things that we, you know, want to be taking into account. We do have to, you know, set aside some time for this. You know, we have a pretty good caseload, but we also have other work we need to be doing as well as the planning board. So that's, those are kind of my updates, I know there's not really any action items. I have to take it upon myself as well to put together something that I can volunteer people to do things or maybe just solicit some help. And what those specifics are, just have to get back up to speed on the master plan. And scenic roads, so that's something that our transportation subcommittee started out with. You know, trying to focus on a little bit, that sort of dropped off a little bit. We were going to do some publicity, some notification, some signage. I know Sue, you have asked a couple of times now. I did find my old files from the transportation subcommittee, so, you know, you, what have you done? I guess, because you were mentioning about finding some seals, signage, did you take some action?
Yes, I did, I contacted Courtney from the rec department several months ago and she said, oh my goodness, this would, this would fit right into what our initiative is for the summer, about getting people out and walking in Nottingham and blah, blah, blah. So she and I contacted Sundance Signs over in Dover and she sent over the recreational department logo and they crafted some circular medallions that could be put up. And then she contacted the public works department because there's no money available in her department and Public Works doesn't have any money. So we're at the where, what do we do? We got some suggestions from Chris Sterndale that the signs should be bigger, they should be reflective, they should be blah, blah, blah. So we're, we need to approach the, Courtney and I, and anybody else who wants to be involved, the select board and see what type of signage they want. Do they want just some sort of medallion for local people? Or do they want something that's like you're entering the White Mountains of New Hampshire sort of signage? And I think we have to work that, that sensibility, but, but we're working on it, so.
Okay, good, well, that's great.
Sue, what size of the, like, what, what size were you initially envisioning? Do you know like what the approximate size you were thinking of? Medallions?
Yes, probably at least 10 inches in diameter, a circular medallion that would attach to a street sign. So it would be below there, below the street sign and just indicate scenic road and that would be it. I think that what Chris Sterndale was thinking about was a sign that would be a standalone on its post, which was not what we were considering.
Let me unfuzzy my screen, however I do that.
So Dirk, what you're showing us, the Deerfield Scenic Road, is that, that's an actual sign?
Yeah, yeah, so Sue, you're probably on your phone, so you might not be able to see. But I do have the medallion that we looked at probably two years ago, there's one in Deerfield. Yeah, so I'm showing that on my video right now.
Oh my God, I've been looking for that, you know?
Well, here I have it, I have it, although it's, I don't know how to, it's out of focus.
So okay, so that looks like it's about the size of a stop sign, which is-
Yeah, it's, it's the width of the speed limit sign, so that's probably-
So it's like 12, 12, 15 inches, okay?
Yep, yep. And Deerfield has it, I don't know what road that is.
I think that's too big, I think it's in your face, too big.
I'll tell you the, from my hometown, they use like an eight by 10, so it's like more of a small note, it's like the size of a no parking sign that you see like in the cities. I've seen like an eight by 10 before. I definitely think it needs to be large enough so that drivers know like, hey, I'm on a scenic road.
Yeah, we, I don't know if it's applicable, but there was, and this might have just been, you know, kind of for recycling that realm, but there was a, I thought there was somebody, like a state entity that did signage and really was low cost.
The prison.
Pardon me?
The, at one time, the state prison did that as part of like some of their work stuff.
Yeah, it still does, yeah.
Yeah, the state, I think the state prison did the turtle signs that we have in town. As well.
Yeah, we got, we got those for free. But, but let me just say, let me just say that we have eight scenic roads in town, so we would need 16 signs. And what we have is really very nice and I'll send that image to all of you so you can see it. And the total cost is just a little over a thousand dollars.
And is that because it was reflect, is that because it was reflective, the high cost, or you know?
No, 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 they're $65 each, they're not reflective, they're just paint on metal, much like trespassing sign. You know, they're not really high tech, they're just good, they're just modest, they're Nottingham. But let me send that off and-
Yeah, I like, I've seen them too, the way, what I had seen that I liked was the, the road sign. So like Poor Farm Road in, instead of green, have it brown and have a little, you know, it says scenic below it or something like that.
Yeah, some towns do that just for private roads, it's red.
Yeah. Anyway, it's just to, just to get the thoughts going again.
Okay.
Let me send that, let me send along what we've done so far and see if that's going to be acceptable. You know, I've kind of moved it in Courtney's arena for recreation, to get, to get people to go out on these roads and to walk and to bike and to whatever, and, and for outreach as well. And then we'll go from there.
Yep.
Just so we don't have the money right now. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to use that as kind of my, my update. Let me just go to anyone else that has updates, let me just call on people, Gary, do you have anything?
Just that SRPC is going to be doing a forum, which I said I'd participate in is around community folks, especially aging folks, and how to be involved and help those people wherever that might be. Anyway, it's supposed to be a discussion that may come up and I think anybody, any of us could, could be involved in it. So I'll let you know once I know more about it and when it might come up.
Yeah, great. Ian?
One thing I had a question on, just so Joanna doesn't think we're ignoring, I did see the draft of the CUP come through. I was going to just print it out tomorrow and kind of just maybe mark it up or something like that.
Yeah, and I think it's probably just on that, I mean, we can't issue those until it gets passed.
Right.
So.
Well, I, yeah, I think it's a good idea to have it ready to go, because I'm sure the second, I'm sure if it passes, the second that goes in, I'm sure there are definitely going to be people taking advantage of it, so.
Yep, yep.
Second one for me, more of a personal update, but heads up that I'll be expecting my first child in the next couple of weeks. So we're, we're finding out this week if it's going to-
Congratulations.
Falling, so pretty soon my life will be a little bit different, I'd say.
So good.
Don't worry, I'll make, I'll still make time for the planning board.
You, of course.
Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But that's it for me, that's my opinion.
Anyone top that?
I got a COVID shot, does that count?
What'd you get, Susan?
I got a COVID shot.
Oh, awesome.
There you go.
Okay, so.
No, it doesn't beat it.
Not dead yet.
It doesn't beat it. Do you have any updates? Other than your COVID shot? Other than your COVID shot?
Well, I could ask Leanne if she would like to talk about the maps that have been posted by the Trails Committee. I can pass that one to her.
Alright.
Oh, okay, well, so there've been maps posted. With the Conservation Commission trail maps for Marsh Woods, which is on Freeman Hall. Which is getting a lot of publicity because Steve Sora posted something in the forum about it. So there's been a lot of activity on that trail. And there's new maps for Kennard Forest and one for the Ternanko Trails. Over off Case Road, so Celia Abrams on Trails Committee did a great job putting those together. And then we also have the Historical Society and the Three Hundredth Committee are doing Zoom. Like educational kind of things. They did one the other night on the geology of Potaco Way, which is very interesting. And they're doing another one March twenty-third on the looms. So I think that the goal is to do one once a month.
Is the Marshwood system, is that the one that is relatively close to the transfer station? That people just kind of park on the side of the road mostly?
Yeah, unfortunately, they're supposed to be maintaining that part. There's a parking area right across the street from the entrance. There's a medallion on the tree, you can see the entrance to the trail. But they haven't really been clearing that out, so people have been kind of having to park like right in the road. But, yeah, it's, it's right there. It's about, about a mile and a half. Altogether, you can go down, there's two different properties. But it's really well marked now.
Okay, good.
Buzz, do you have anything?
I got my first COVID shot this weekend too.
Oh, good.
That's it. That's all I got for you.
Ed?
I know you did me last, because I, you know, usually I, I say, oh, no, and then I come back to it.
I, I know. Well, I was gonna, I was gonna call on Joanna and then you.
I thanked the Conservation Commission for getting that map out there for, for that property and then. I haven't walked that one yet, but the Kennard Road and especially the Ternanko property are a pretty amazing piece of property that we're. Very fortunate to have as assets to be able to use for, for recreation in town. You know, that came through, through private land ownership, private owners allowing that, so. I thank the Concom for doing that and getting those maps started and out for some of these properties, so more individuals can use them. And then other than that, I do know Joanna had mentioned that the, and the, the conditional use permit that we do have to make sure we get that focused on. Because we have possibly two spots in our zoning that will authorize that. So we will need to make sure we address that maybe at the next planning board meeting. After everybody's had a chance to review it. And, and nothing that can, can top Ian's news, so congratulations there, Ian.
Thank you.
Joanna, do you have anything?
I do. Tyler Eaton sent me the, some notes from the recent. Select Board Meeting. First one is Maple Ridge Development is all done. They've received their last certificate of occupancy and it was also the last one to not have impact fees applied. He also wanted it noted that. Special event licensing was discussed at the Select Board Meeting. They're working on a policy for special events. Mike Spagna spoke about concerns about gun use in town and considering. The planning board may be working on a warrant article for noise ordinance. That was it. We do have some more cases coming up, so I will be getting out a packet to you guys hopefully within the next week.
I apologize, I do this every time. It's Mr. Veal again. I did want to touch base back on the cemeteries separate from any cases. Tonight, I, I believe we did mention that one time years ago. Is whether or not we needed to add some kind of buffer or additional language in our site plan or zoning regs form. And, and I believe we just defaulted to the RSA language, which. Adds like a twenty-five foot buffer around known cemeteries, but when you get to a situation where. There's a possible, that's when there's going to be an issue. You can't really create a buffer around something that you don't know the bounds of.
Yeah, there's over a hundred and twenty cemeteries in town and we're going to start running into more of these as development keeps growing.
Except for two or three are privately owned, correct? The landowner owns them versus the town.
Yeah, well, the, no, the town doesn't own any of these family burial grounds. They're owned by the descendants. But there are quite a few that we're not exactly sure where they are because they've just kind of disappeared over time. Either the headstones. Fell and then got buried over time or they were removed. Just I want to set a precedence that, hey, you know, if you clear out all the field stones or headstones. Eventually you'll just be able to build on that land and it won't be an issue anymore.
Now, they are certainly an asset that needs some protection. Okay, that's it for really updates. Do we have, I think we have one set of minutes to. Get approved.
Before we do that, Ms. Chairman, I do see we have, it looks like we still have three or four people on for public. I didn't know if they're actually here to. Partake in any public comment. Did you want to do that first?
Sure, yeah. We do allow public to make comment during the meeting. This is kind of a set section that it doesn't have to pertain to any application. In fact, it's not supposed to pertain to any application. But you can ask general questions pending things. So I do see a couple of. Public members out there. If you have any comments or questions of the board, just get our attention. And if you don't, then if you feel free to reach out to Joanna. She can put you in touch with myself or get you the right person to talk with if you have some questions. Or if you want to join, we do have an opening, so any, any potential board members. You know, again, give me a call or give Joanna a call. Okay, let's do minutes. What was the date? I don't have my.
February tenth.
Ms. Chairman and Joanna, I had sent out, I know these were very lengthy. It was a long meeting. There's five pages of minutes and I, I know. Sue and I had both sent in some edits. Have those all been, have you had a chance to go through those or I know you've been pretty busy with other things?
Sorry, yes, I have gone through them. Can you hear me?
Yep. I'm nodding, but my video's off, so.
I mean, do you, do you want to wait to, do you want to wait to just confirm those revisions and we'll take them up with the next meeting?
Yes, I would prefer that.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, Joanna, I don't know if you've had a chance to send out the amended, amended version. So, yeah, so Ms. Chairman, I move that we, oh, I don't need a motion for it, we just table those.
Anybody else have anything for this evening? Since you're still unmuted, Ed, you can make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Chairman, I moved that we adjourn.
Yep, everybody seconds.
Everybody seconds.
Everybody seconds. Alright, thanks everyone and have a good evening.
Good night.